Yes.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Now, the day. Things just fly by sometimes. Looks like we are. Still a little bit short of a corn here. Probably don't expect Jeff Weston to be here. You know. Before I call the meeting's order anyway. That way a little longer, but. Deacon and Michael are. Are either of you. Open to meeting in person?
I'd be open to it. I think if we do a hybrid. So we don't lose the participation.
I think at this point, it's always going to be hybrid. Um, just, you know. Yeah, I don't know if if at this point, we could even hold a meeting. Um, an in-person meeting without it being in a hybrid. I don't know if that's currently allowed. What about you, Deacon? Are you? Would you be? You're muted, sir.
No, I'd be fine.
You'd be fine going in person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness, he's here.
Jeff, I haven't called the meeting to order yet. I. I need to do that soon, but I was wondering if. Would you be willing at some point to have an in-person meeting?
An in-person meeting with who?
With the board. It would be a hybrid meeting, but you know, like, you know, to be in town hall.
Um, that's a good question. Well. Right now, um, I'm gonna be, um, I. I'm gonna be cut open, um, in whatever, in a few hours. Um, so probably not immediately.
No, but I mean, just generally speaking, you know. Um, and Robert?
Well, in order to not be seen, I have to put a bag over my head. Yeah, I, 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 I. I'd be okay with it. I like the ease. Of being on video and also I can see you all at the same time and. Really get all your expressions without turning my head. So there are a lot of advantages in this approach.
Okay. Well, I suppose we could talk about it more, um, given the timing where we're getting into our time here. Uh, Carrie, you got your hand up?
Yeah, um, just for in-person meetings, um, I would probably have to stay hybrid just because I live an hour away. Yeah. For meetings, I would not be getting home until like ten, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's always going to be a hybrid meeting and, you know, we're not going to compel anyone to come to town hall. Now, uh, at this time, I'm gonna call this meeting of the planning board to order. We have a corn, we have. Uh, Michael Deacon, uh, Jeff. And Robert present. And Ashley missing. Ashley and Keith, Ashley, yes, you know, I apologize, Ashley, you know.
That's okay. Just got here.
No, and also, you know, to be, yeah, I just. No, I. Okay, um, would you be?
It's all good. Ask again?
Yeah, I'm gonna table that for now. Uh, we were talking about just me in person, but. Okay. Um, so the first item on our on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish out for public comment on, uh? Any item that is not on the agenda at this time? Okay, hearing, hearing. Um, is anyone here, uh? To discuss, um, some sort of land use issue, uh, under homeowner education and guidance? Okay. So we went from being. Five minutes behind to five minutes ahead. Yeah. So next on our agenda is associate, uh, member vote. We have, uh, two. Candidates for. Uh, planning board associate member. Uh, Mary David and, uh, Tom Seifert. We've heard from both of them over the past several months. And tonight. What I would like to do is, uh. I would like to entertain, uh, motions to, uh. To recommend. Um, each of these candidates and, uh, vote up or down after the motion is made, we'll have. Some discussion. And then we'll vote. And we will start. Um, I will start by thanking both the candidates for, uh. Uh, you know, showing interest in being associate members and. Bearing with us through this process, um. You know, your interest, your interest in public service. I think is very much appreciated by all of us. So thank you for that.
Nathan, you want a motion?
Yeah, so, um, we will start with, uh, Mary David. So I'd like to hear a motion.
I'll move to approve Mary David as an associate member to the planning board.
Do I hear a second? I would like to, uh, have a vote up or down on this if someone would second that.
I can second that.
All right, thank you. Now, uh. Discussion?
I have a question if I could.
Please.
I feel I should know this, but are we trying to have a total of two associate members? Um, in the, uh, in the planning board? So we already have one. Are we, uh, we trying to have ideally a second or three? Maybe you could tell me. I feel I should know this, but I don't.
That's a good question, Jeff, and, you know, I probably should have explained this. So. For one thing, um. You know, I think we need to have a vote, uh, so that. You know, there's been kind of this matter of, uh, having an applicant and, uh. You know, if we never vote on it, it kind of leaves the matter open. Um, indefinitely. So, you know, voting one way or the other is a way to kind of, uh. You know, figure out where where we are on this. Now, uh, so there's a few different ways that this could go tonight. There's. By nature of math, three different ways. Uh, we could vote to recommend both candidates to the select to. Go to a joint meeting with the select board. In which case we'd have to figure that out when we get to the slot board because we can only. Approve one of, uh, person at this time, uh, for associate member. Um, we have one associate member at this time, Keith Hasty. And we can only, um. Approve one more. That doesn't mean we can't recommend two people to go to a joint meeting of the select board. So that that could be. A somewhat awkward discussion when we get to the slide board. Um, the other thing we could do is we could. Decline to, uh, recommend both candidates to move forward to the slot board and we'd be back at square one. And, uh. Continue to receive applications. Um, or, you know, uh, one or the other, uh, may, uh, pass the vote and one or the other may. Not pass the vote. In which case we go to the slot where one person.
Could I ask another question? Is our goal? Have we talked about our goal? Uh, the planning board is our goal to have two associate members? I, I don't know what the. Okay, so I, I, I didn't know that. I wasn't clear on that. I should have been, but I wasn't. So our goal, our goal is to have two associate members. Um, in, um, in addition to the seven, um, regular members. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thanks.
Um, so Robert. In, in. Moving to recommend both. We're really turning it over to the select board. Uh, to join us in making a final decision as opposed to recommending one person and making that recommendation to the select board.
I think that's accurate.
If, if we were to record to. End up recommending both candidates, uh, that that would be the case. Yes, and I'm sure that, uh. You know, the select board would accommodate it if we felt. That we have two good candidates here. And that we want to, uh, bring in the select board because we can't, uh, decide on one. That's fine. That's a fine outcome. And we do, I think we do have two excellent candidates here.
Okay, moving on to continued discussion. I, I do feel we have two good candidates. Um, but I, uh, in this case, uh, will not be, uh. Uh, we'll be recommending to support. Uh. Tom. Uh, and doing it, uh. Uh. From my gut sense that Tom brings, has a lot of skills that he can bring to town for the first time and, um. And, uh. At the same time. Uh, recognizing. How much, uh, Mary has to offer. She's involved in other ways. And for that, uh, for that reason, I'm, uh, I would be, uh, going, uh, in support of, uh, Tom.
If I can piggyback on that, just, I mean. For me, as I brought up in the previous meetings, I do have the concern about, um. Someone being on other committees that are dealing with land use issues and. So in a similar way that Robert's addressing, I mean, what's, what's? Good is Tom is not involved in other committees in in that regard, um, so. I'm leaning in that direction as well, but, uh, just wanted to share that.
Uh, I'd be happy to speak as well. I, I, I feel in a similar way. I think they're both excellent candidates. I think that, um. It's better not to be on a lot of boards because that, um, it gives a lot of power to one person and I don't think that's in the town's best interest. I think it's. In the town's best interest to have a wider variety of voices. So I would also support Tom in this case. Even though I appreciate Mary, um, and, um. Her desire to be involved, her desire to, um. Volunteer for the town is very admirable, but, um. I also feel it's better to spread the wealth or spread the power among several different candidates.
Or the pain.
Or the what?
Or the pain.
Or the pain, yeah. I, I didn't want to say that, or the pain, yes. Thank you.
Fast and loose with the truth here. Anyone else? Well, I would. Again, like to thank you, Mary, for, uh, you know, coming forward and, and volunteering to be considered for this, uh, position and. Especially. I liked what you said about wanting to help people, um. Being on boards and. I would encourage you to continue doing that on the conservation commission, on the ZBA and the, uh. Though enough is familiar with the board's work, the Lake Wyolla Advisory Committee. Or, uh. Yeah. So. Again, um. Your, uh. Voluntarism is very much appreciated in town. And unless there's any last chance, anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna call the roll. Take care.
Yeah.
Bonner?
Hi.
Weston?
Uh, are we voting for one of the candidates now? Is this the vote?
Yeah, yeah. So this is the, we have a motion on the floor to, uh. Um, recommend Mary David for, uh, consideration at a joint meeting with the select board. So a, uh. An I goes. Is in favor to go to the select board and a no is, uh, to decline going to the select board.
So this is a voting to have Mary go to the select board?
Right, so yes is to go to the select board with Mary and no is to not go to the select board with Mary.
Um, I vote no then.
Okay. Pie cropped.
I'm a nay.
Raymond?
Nay.
And I will also vote no.
You got Deacon.
No, Deacon, uh.
I was an I.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we have, uh. The denos have it. The motion does not carry. Now, I would like to, uh. Hear a, uh, motion to recommend, uh, Tom Seifert for, uh, consideration as associate member with a. Joint meeting at the slot board.
I'll. I'll move to approve, um. Or to recommend Tom Seifert as a associate member to the planning board.
I second.
Gotcha. No one has anything to say?
Well, I, I think we were lucky to have two excellent candidates and, um. I think, um. Tom, um. He would just be. An associate member, he wouldn't be involved with, um, the other boards, so I think that's, um. A better choice just because it's, uh. Better to have a lot of people involved rather than one person being on several boards at the same time. And, um, also Tom comes with, um, great experience and, um. A lot of skills that I think can be used by the Tom, by the planning board and, um, so I appreciate, um, again, both of them, um. For their interest, but I think Tom, um, given his skills, um, would, would, um, be a stronger candidate.
I guess the thing I would say, just to clarify, given previous conversations, is. Um, I, I also support Tom, you know, moving forward as an associate member. And I do appreciate Mary is willing to to serve. I think the thing that I wanted to share is. I think it's important that we're recommending people that we feel are bringing skills or perspective or. Understanding, so it's not sort of the last man standing kind of thing, just because someone's interested. That I think we're, we're, we're learning is the issues that we face as a planning board are complex, and so we need people who are just in rolling up their sleeves. Um, doing the work, bringing understanding information, and so I'm, I'm supportive because I think Tom checks that off, um, but. It's, it's more, more than just someone who's interested. I think at these days, we got a lot of complexity going on.
I will note that, uh. After I posted the agenda. I was slow to communicate to the associate member candidates. I didn't do so, I don't think until. Saturday, maybe. But that, uh, Tom reached out almost immediately to me and kind of said, hey, you know, I, uh, saw you posted this and, you know, I'm already in the loop on it. So one, he's paying close attention. Um. And. You know, I did. Appreciate, you know, the conversation we had at our last meeting with Tom. I thought he gave. Some. Pretty, pretty well-reasoned answers to some of the questions we asked. Um. And, uh. I also think it is a. And uh, I also think it is a. You know, he, Tom has a lot of good experience and and also I think it's a, you know, another excellent opportunity to to bring someone into. Town government that hasn't already been in town government. You know, that's kind of like a. And you know, especially, I mean, associate member is an important post because you never know when we're gonna need it and, you know, they're gonna be in it. And then, you know, we might have a home rule petition where, you know, their role could be broadened, right? Uh, one way or another, right legislatively, but um. You know, it's a, it's a excellent entry point into town government, I think, just to, you know, give people a chance to get their feet wet and. And become involved, so. It's a good deal. Anyone else have anything they want to say before we vote? All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Deekira?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye, in in favor of Tom. This is what we're voting for, correct? Aye.
Pi Croft?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
And I am a I. The uh, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Tom. You're moving on to the next step.
Thank you. Very much all of you.
Or our condolences, whichever you prefer.
I caught that paying word. Thank you.
And you know, again, I do want to thank uh, you, Mary, for uh. For your time through this process and uh, your interest in the board. It it is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Mary, I'd like to say something else if I could to Mary. Um, I've been in this situation personally myself where, you know, I. Put my name in and then I didn't get it and I felt bad and um, I just want to say that there's. There's no reason to, you know, feel bad about truck, putting your name up and trying. Um, I think it takes a lot of courage to put your name up. And try, so um, I just want to say thank you for your interest. Thank you for being involved with the town and um. We still really appreciate your voice. Um, so thank you so much, Mary.
Thank you.
So Nathan, just in terms of the logistics, you'll check in um, with the select board, figure out scheduling and then. We'll come together with them, whatever seems, whether it's end of December, early January, most likely.
Yeah. Given that, yeah, it's uh, we'll probably uh, do this in January. I don't know if uh. Yeah, you know, I haven't, I haven't looked that far ahead to be honest, um, but. Yeah, um, does anyone know when the next select board meeting is?
Let's see.
They said December nineteenth, I think. It started Tuesday.
Yeah, they're always on Tuesdays, yeah. Let's see, I'm just looking it up.
Yeah.
They have to vote on the town, special town meeting warrant by then, ideally, so they were hoping to do it on the nineteenth.
There's nothing on the town calendar for the nineteenth.
Right.
Yeah, they never do it until the last minute.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I would, I was seeing Becky will put it on on Friday. Because that's the deadline for them.
Does anyone have a conflict with the uh, is it the nineteenth?
I might. I don't know right now.
Okay.
But there is a possibility.
An- anyone else? Well, it's uh, you know, don't worry, we can kind of um. Continue uh, figuring out schedule as we go. All right. So um. Well, we won't uh, commit to anything right now. Well, uh, you know, I'll I'll touch base with Becky. Uh, see. You know, what they expect that agenda to look like and uh, whether or not it might be just better to wait. Am I back? Okay. It froze up on me for a second there.
Good thing you didn't pick your nose or anything.
Good thing. Okay. So uh, next on our agenda is to review the annual report. Unfortunately, I was not able to finish it. So. What what I'm gonna do is, rather than spending time going over this now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish it. There was an email sent out some time ago, uh, just reminding us all that this report is due. And Michael was good enough to share with me several examples from the prior three years. So uh, I've got a kind of a model to go off and. And I might. Pretty, I'm pretty much following that so far, you know, once it's all together, I might. See if there's anything I I I want to change or think about changing, but. It's uh, I don't expect any serious deviations from, you know, what you've seen in the past, uh, for those of us who have. Looked at this in the past. So I'll send that out and I'll I'll just ask that, you know, if uh, especially of uh, maybe Michael or or Deacon, if you can go through on the grammar. Check me. We'll try and take a good look at it before I send it out. And hopefully we can, uh, we 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 need to uh, approve it at our next meeting in January because it's due the thirty first of January. Why, I did not.
It's not a hard date.
Yeah, they're happy when they get.
No. Well, you know. I uh, I hope to uh. What's that?
It's, they they like getting in some timely fashion so they consolidate them, but um, I know people are often late, so.
Hopefully, we, hopefully, we won't be. All right. So the. Next item on our agenda. Is uh, FERCog PB Designee. I raised this at a previous meeting. And I had some confusion. I I think I misread something on the website. Um, there's a few different functions at FERCog, some of it's a, I think a Regional Council of Governments. But there's also a regional planning board, so I think. The Council of Governments may have been where I saw, you know, a select board um, designee, but then, you know, for the planning board, the regional planning board is a. Planning Board Designee. So I think we can act, you know, unilaterally to designate someone to that.
Nathan, if I can just jump in, so. FERCog, I mean, it is, their name is Franken Regional Council of Governments. Um, they, they got created when. The county got disbanded under Governor Weld, um, but they serve a couple of purposes, so. There's shared services like building, electrical inspection services, that kind of stuff. As well as being a planning agency, so they sort of, they fulfill different parts, um, and then they do consulting with the municipalities as well, so.
Right.
Those mostly for people who are not aware.
So I did um. Have the conversation uh, with my family and uh, given that, I think it's one, you know, once a month or if that for a meeting there. So I would be willing to uh. To and interested in in uh, jumping into that. Unless there's someone else that really wants it, but.
I do not want it, but thank you.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, yes.
I'd like to, Nathan.
Second.
Thank you, uh, Deacon and Michael. Appreciate that.
And I, I guess I would just say for informational sake, like in situations like this, just like we did with the CPC. It doesn't have to be us or our associate member, it could be someone that we want to go, so it's great, Nathan, you want to go because you're closest to this stuff, which is great, but. Um, if ever we're feeling pressured, that is always an option.
Yeah, no, I I would be uh. You know, if it. Becomes too much of a uh. Time commitment for me or anything like that, then uh, I will certainly be. You know, cultivating uh, potential recruits for that. Any uh.
I have a question. How long have you been on the planning board?
I've been on the planning board since. I don't know if it was in October, November, uh, twenty twenty.
Okay.
And how long does, how long does it feel like you've been on the planning board?
About that long. I, it do- it it doesn't feel long at all, to be honest.
My hope for you is that this experience is good, you know, and and I imagine it'll be good to. Connect with other planners from other towns in our county and see how things are done. You know, you being the chair, you probably learn a lot and hopefully it won't be a huge commitment.
Well, to be honest, that's. My primary reason for wanting to do it is, is to. Network because I don't have any idea about what they're gonna talk about up there, really. I've looked at some of the agendas, but I. I'm not overly familiar with uh, what they're, with any current projects are or anything like that. Um, I'll 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 touch base with Jeff at some point. You know, see uh, you know, get up to speed to the extent I can, but. Um, yeah, I think it's uh. I don't know, I'm I'm interested to see, you know, what comes of it, um, in terms of, you know, what the board is actually, you know, taking action on and. You know, the kind of networking uh, opportunities and, you know, sharing of information and ideas that will come from it. Um, so. That'll be good. Okay, uh, I'm gonna call the roll for this, um. So I'll go with the Deekira.
Enthusiastically, I.
Bonner?
More enthusiastically, I.
Weston?
Uh, uh, also, uh, very enthusiastically, I. Thank you.
Pi Croft?
Okay, well, I feel like I have to say that now, now too. Enthusiastically, I.
And uh. Raymond?
About a minute, uh, so what's the question?
The question is uh. Uh, Deacon nominated uh. Me, Nathan Murphy.
Okay, okay, uh, I.
All right, thank you. All right, well, uh, wish me luck, everyone.
You gotta vote on yourself.
Oh, yes, I I'll uh, I I'm an I. Okay. Okay, next up, we have our favorite topic, ANR fees. Now. So let me. Unfold. This. Um, we voted on this. We voted on language for the ANR fees. I want to say it was in August or September. But it was, it was several months ago and uh. And then, you know, I. It was right around the time where I had uh, was kind of like coming into uh, being chair and, you know, getting access to the website and things like that and. And at one point, Michael kind of said, hey, you want to uh, post that, you know, so uh, the other day I I pulled the form and uh, started looking at it. And. I was under the impression that said something about a seventy dollar fee on that, on Form A, which is, you know, for approval not required. But it doesn't say anything about the fee on the form. And what I'm gonna do. Is I'm gonna go to uh, the planning board website and pull up this document. Oh, you know what?
You know, I, I can share.
You know, yeah, could you, could you do it, Michael? Because I actually have so many things open and my computer is so slow. That'd be great.
You guys see that?
Right, yep. So uh. And then when uh. When you go to that uh, document, rules and regulations governing uh, the subdivision of land in Shootsbury.
Yeah, I can share that one too.
Okay.
There it is. Point B.
Right, yeah. Oh, you know, um.
I got the other one too, Nathan, the instructions.
Yeah, well then, you know, I guess uh. It might also be helpful to remind everyone, you know, we kind of uh. The language that we came up with and and approved said uh. It's a seven, seventy dollar fee, you know, uh, regardless and then. You know, you can create one additional building lot and then next. Additional building lot is going to incur an additional seventy dollar fee and so on and so forth, right? So if you created. If you have one lot and you made three building lots, that would be a one hundred forty dollar fee. But this doesn't say that in this regulation here. So um. And I, and I suppose that uh, these regulations were uh, promulgated by uh, having a public hearing. And uh.
I, I'm, I'm not sure about that, Nathan.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure. I, I I wonder if we don't want to talk to Donna at this point.
Well, yeah, I uh. I was also wondering if if. We don't want to more or less put this language on the uh. On the form. And if we don't want to do that now, we don't have to do that now, we can talk to Donna too, um.
I, well, one thing I came clear, and Nathan, I want to thank you for. One, finding the discrepancy and then helping me understand the, because there's three different parts. There's the A and R form. There's the A and R instructions, which I didn't share, and then there's the subdivision um, regulations, um, so. Those are the three, and I think my sense, I I I agree, Deacon, I I don't think it needs a hearing, but regardless, we should maybe check with Donna. But what I think the fix is, is that we take the language, if we, assuming we still like it, that we approved, and we put it. In the two places where it shows up, the subdivision regulations and the A and R instructions. Um, so that the language is identical, because that's, that's, those are the two places where the actual text is. Um, and we don't have to change the form, because if we're changing their, the form, it just references the correct language.
Okay. Yeah, no, that sounds good. And I I uh. I'll, I'll, you know, reach out to uh. Donna via Becky and see if we can. Because I mean, I have that question about, you know, um. You know, do we need a. You know, what what would we need to do to, you know, change these regulations, um, you know, as a public hearing required? So on and so forth, so.
Yeah.
I'll touch base with, uh, I'll make the necessary inquiries and we can take this up later. There's a lot of people here. I wonder what's on, what's on the agenda? Know about, oh, yeah. Okay, um, next is the uh. Does anyone want to say anything else about this before we move on, A and R fees? We'll follow up later, right?
Okay, perfect.
Um, next, we have the uh, Wetlands Protection Bylaw Discussion.
Do you want me to introduce that?
Well, did, did anyone uh, have a chance to uh? Well, did, did anyone, uh, have a chance to, uh, take a look at any of the, um, documents that, uh, Miriam sent out?
Yes, Robert.
Okay. Anyone else?
I did.
All right.
I have not.
I have not.
Okay. So, you know, there's, uh, obviously been a, uh, with the Conservation Commission, um, this year, they promulgated some new bylaw regulations and, you know, the Select Board got involved and, you know, uh, kind of did their own legal review and you know, there was some issues, but I think there was some general consensus that it would be a good thing to get a new bylaw. So that's what they're looking to do. Um, Michael, you can talk on it a little bit if you want.
Yeah, so I asked Nathan to put this on the agenda, um, after speaking with Miriam after the, she sent out the, um, an email to all the, a whole bunch of boards. I don't know, it's like three weeks ago, something like that, when they finished the almost finished version of the, the new bylaw. Um, and Miriam's on the call, so she can speak for herself, but the idea is, we're gonna have a special town meeting. The, this new Wetlands bylaw is going to be up for consideration and you know, on the warrant, it'll often say, you know, FinCom recommends, Select Board recommends, that kind of thing. Um, a point that Miriam had made to me was, it would be good if all the boards that are involved and impacted by the Wetlands bylaw would read it, and if we felt comfortable, support it. Um, and so the thing that I took away was that our zoning bylaw, there's at least a few references where we're dependent upon the CONCOM to review things consistent with the Wetlands bylaw, you know, so, um, whether it's a building lot, you know, on the small end, the solar stuff on the big end, things in between, where we reference, it has to be consistent with, um, the Wetlands bylaw. And so it seemed like that was a very reasonable thing for the, the planning board to say, we've reviewed this new Wetlands bylaw, that's, you know, an update of forty years, and we would recommend it as part of the town meeting. Uh, my sense is, one, not everyone's read it quite yet. We don't have a big, lot of time on the agenda, so I think we can talk about if and how we were to do that. And then I think, and Miriam, you can correct me if we're wrong, the public hearing hasn't happened and the legal review hasn't happened, so it seems like we could either do it contingently, or we could wait for the public review and the public hearing. And then if we wanted to just regroup and have a topic-specific, um, planning board meeting to come up with a conclusion, but it seems like this is a big enough thing in town, um, and relevant that the planning board could easily recommend if it desired, um, and so that's sort of how it got to the agenda.
Well, yeah, and, um, you know, I, I kind of think you're correct with, you know, not everyone has had a chance to review it and we don't have a huge amount of time today, um, what did I put on this? Yeah, ten minutes is long. So, you know, it's, uh, it's a, it's a lot of information out there, right? Um, so I don't know about, uh, you know, he, he, you know, with, you know, the public hearing is, uh, next week, right? And, uh, it, is it certain that this will be, uh, on the warrant for, uh, special town meeting, Miriam?
Hi, um, I, I would presume it will be, um. There is a, we have our plan, we have a public hearing next Monday night at six o'clock. But we are also meeting as a commission on Thursday, this Thursday, on the fourteenth. And we're gonna meet a little earlier at six o'clock. We have an hour designated to talk about the bylaws, so if people want to come and, um, ask questions or have conversation, we would welcome you uh, this Thursday.
Yeah, and Miriam, I don't know if you know this question. I was, I couldn't find an email, Grace sent me an email a few weeks ago about when they're printing the warrant, which is, you know, the point at which if we had a decision, it would get documented or not.
I know that the Select Board is voting on the warrant on Tuesday, the nineteenth.
So I think, Nathan, alternatively, if we, you know, what I was thinking about is our next meet, our January meeting is, uh, let's see. Our January meeting would probably be the eighth, I think. So an alternative is we could just put it on our agenda for a little bit of a discussion on the eighth, with the idea that if we had a position, we could share it on town meeting floor, as opposed to just being in the, in the piece of paper that gets distributed. Um, since timing might not work, so that's an alternative.
Yeah, that's, uh, I think, you know, frankly, that's the only choice we have, because, uh, you know, unfortunately, it's just, uh, not enough time to really, uh, do that, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please. You know, I mean, you know, Miriam's here, so people, you know, ask questions.
So Miriam, I'm wondering if you might be able to just point out to us some places that we should pay particular attention to um, in the bylaws where they might be relevant to the places where the planning board and the Conservation Commission's work intersect. If not, that's okay, but if you had anything.
Um, well, I'll give you, I haven't prepared anything. I'm gonna give you like four pointers to think about. Um, one is that this draft bylaw does not substantially change jurisdiction compared to our existing bylaw. Um, we specifically did not, we are not proposing any major changes. Um, one change is that we are adding a two hundred foot buffer zone for riverfront, but that already exists under state law. So that is not an increase. Um, and everything else is essentially the same for all practical purposes. So that's pointer number one. Um, about ninety percent of the language in this draft bylaw is based on the MACC model bylaw. Um, and that's why I gave you a side-by-side comparison that's kind of color-coded, so you, you don't even have to get into reading all the details. You can just look at the sections that are the same. And, um, you know, we've been advised that the MACC model is, um, been vetted numerous times by many attorneys, approved by the Attorney General many times, is basically the template for all bylaws in Massachusetts. So it's a little different than zoning. Almost every town has almost exactly the same bylaw in Massachusetts. Little differences between towns, but everybody uses the same recipe cookbook. So those are the main things, except that we've added some language about climate change, which is the newer MACC recommended language. You won't see it in the model bylaw. It's in more recent two thousand twenty-three publications from MACC, so you'll see a link that I've sent around to a website that was developed by MACC and actually McGregor, Legere and Stevens with new recommended climate change language that is directly coming from Special Counsel Gregor McGregor. So we're using guidance and new updated language that his firm has developed. So I think those are some takeaways.
Okay.
Miriam, just specifically following up, uh, what Ashley said, like, am I correct that our zoning bylaws is dependent on certain approvals or assessments for the CONCOM?
So I've gone through the zoning bylaw and looked at where's, where some of the, uh, touch points are. For building permits, there's a requirement that there be a Conservation Commission sign-off and that the projects be in compliance both with the Wetlands Protection Act and also any local bylaw. So that's where building permit applications have to be reviewed. Um, special permits, um, require wetland delineations um, that have been approved by the Conservation Commission. So again, you know, a special permit outplay, application would have to go through a CONCOM review first. Um, there's some other things like curb cuts and driveway permits, also where they have to be in compliance with Wetlands regulations, and there may be some other things. There's a couple of other definitions.
Does any building permit get, uh, signed off on by the CONCOM?
What?
Does every building permit get signed up on the?
Everyone that involves ground disturbance. So if, um, if it's like you're getting your roof replaced or replacing windows or you're doing insulation, no. But if you're doing any ground disturbance, yes, we go out and we do a site visit and a site plan review. We do dozens and dozens of site visits every year.
Uh, Miriam, this is Robert. Uh, I guess your pointer one answers this, but, uh, just looking back at the ANDROD, ANDROD approval of several of Cowell's parcels uh, with regard to, uh, jurisdictional wetland boundaries, I guess that goes back to two or three years ago. Uh, given the new bylaw, would you anticipate that the same, uh, approval would be met under the new bylaw?
Yeah, I don't see that it would be any different. Um, we've spelled out, um, we've spelled out regulations anyway, and my expectation would be that if a new bylaws passed, we would of course have to update regulations to change wording and some references, but we wouldn't expect any substantive changes. Again, we're not substantively changing, um, the definition of resource areas.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone else have, uh, any, any questions on this at this time?
I'd like to thank Miriam for all of her diligence, her hard work, her passion for, um, protecting the wetlands and the forests of our town. So thank you, Miriam.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Miriam, for, uh, coming and being available to answer questions today. We appreciate that.
Wores, thanks.
Um, so I think that's all we're gonna do on this for now, um. It's a, it's a tight turnaround. I would, uh, you know, basically encourage people that if you want to, uh, submit comments, uh, you can do so as a resident of town, but it, it, the board is not in a position to, uh, submit comments at this time and, um, you know, we, I do think, uh, Michael's outlined the plan where if, if the board wanted to, we could, uh, support the, uh, endorse the, um, warrant article on the floor of town meeting. So that's, uh, that's all we have for this discussion for now. Okay. All right, next, uh, expectation setting for the chair and designees. Um, I was hoping to have a little bit more prepared for this, but I wanted to have a, just a brief conversation given some of the recent events we've had. Uh, as everyone knows, the, uh, Attorney General, uh, issued their decision on the bylaw that we, the town voted, uh, special town meeting back in January. And, uh, you know, shortly after that information came out, I ended up, uh, you know, speaking with Michael and I kind of said, hey, you know, uh, just to, just to back up a little bit, um, um, I have a, a situation with my employer where I'm, uh, beholden to a, uh, code of conduct, um. And you know, it addresses, uh, serving as an elected official. And it says that I can do so, but that I need to abstain from participating in debate and voting in matters, you know, related to the energy business. So things like solar, um, energy storage, transmission, wind, things like that. Um, I don't participate in those discussions. I don't vote on those matters. Um, and I can perform administrative functions, you know, related to those matters, like putting them on an, an agenda. I can receive information. It's different than, you know, so a lot of times the word recusal has been thrown around about this, but it's not a true recusal. It's more like an inability to act in terms of, you know, say the Associate Member bylaw, um. You know, recusals, you know, typically pertain to the state conflict of interest law. Um, and that's a different thing where, you know, if, if a board member has a financial interest in, uh, a project that's before the board, then they recuse themselves and and that's, you know, I think there's certain decorum around that where, you know, you would, on a Zoom meeting, you'd probably turn off your camera and, uh, you know, if you're, if it's a in-person meeting, you, you might leave the room, right? So that you're not, uh, sending, uh, signals to people about your thoughts on it. Um, and this is, uh, a little different. I mean, I still wouldn't want to be sending signals, but it, it doesn't carry the same weight of, uh, you know, the State Ethics Commission, uh, per se. Um, it's kind of a situation between, uh, myself and my employer. Um, I'll be there as it may, you know, I want to just, you know, speak to the board about, you know, um, you know, how we navigate this, um. So when the, uh, Attorney General decision came out, as I was saying, you know, I kind of spoke with Michael and, you know, I, I knew that, you know, there was gonna probably be a, a joint session with the Select Board, probably, uh, executive session and, uh, you know, I, I could, you know, because a response to something like this would tend to be proactive, I, uh, reached out to Michael and, and asked him to just kind of take the lead on it. Um, so, uh, that it would just kind of avoid any appearance of, uh, you know, and just kind of keep it a little bit cleaner. And, uh, in doing so, you know, you, you may recall, I, I sent an email, there was, you know, there was some emails going around, and I asked, you know, everyone to coordinate with Michael on, uh, this sort of thing. Uh, and that was between the planning board and select board and town administrator. Um, so, uh, that's that, um, you know, I think, you know, is, uh, being a designate for something like this, you know, that would, uh, give Michael the ability to, uh, and for a regularly scheduled meeting, you know, if I, for some reason, in, incommunicado, right around the time where you're coming up against forty-eight hours before posting, um, right, if some new information came in and Michael can't get a hold of me, he can go and, and add a, an item to the agenda. You know, because we need to talk about the solar bylaw, and it's not on the agenda. He can go and add that to the agenda. Um, because I said, you know, I, I, I asked to, uh, to do that. Um, you know, I, 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 I asked Michael in this case, you know, if he's, you know, maybe emailing different town officials or whatnot, you know, just to copy me, just so it's kind of like, so they know that it's, he's doing it on my behalf, as chair and not on his own. Um, and, uh, so anyway, um, I just want to go over that and, you know, I'd like to, you know, maybe have a, a quick vote, you know, to kind of, uh, you know, ba- basically, you know, my intention will be to have, uh, and, and, you know, at least for the time being, I, I've asked Michael to, you know, deal with the response to the solar bylaw and, um, uh, being rejected by the, uh, Attorney General's office. Um, so I would like to hear from the board their support of that.
And just, just expand, Nathan, also the lawsuit, since you can't touch that.
Right, yes, yeah. And, yeah, also, I also the lawsuit, yeah. So I will, I will, and this would be, it's a, it's kind of a non-binding vote, but it's just, uh, putting it in the, in the minutes as a vote. Um, that, uh, the board supports this, uh, designation of Michael to, to handle these matters.
That's a motion it seconded.
Well, I, I, I'm not, well, yeah, let's, uh, sure. So we could say that I've, I've moved, uh, as chair to, uh, to have a a non-binding, uh, you know, show of, uh, support for, uh, Michael to handle, um, matters relating to the attorney, uh, response, the planning board response to the Attorney General decision and, uh, planning board involvement and, um, the, uh, complaint, uh, the Coles complaint. So, uh, we have, uh, my motion and a, uh, second by, uh, Raymond. And now for discussion, is anyone that want to add anything to this? Any questions, concerns? Now is the time. Please speak up.
I have a question that I'm mainly just for curiosity, but, um, will you be informed of what happens in discussions related to these matters, even though you're not part of? will you be informed of what happens in discussions related to these matters, even though you're not part of them?
Like if, if it's an executive session?
Yeah, or even, I mean, I guess I'm not totally clear on at what point you have to check out and it doesn't influence how I would vote on this. Like, I'm very comfortable with the arrangement. I'm just curious if how far you have to step away from it, or if you're, if you're able to at least like know what's going on.
No, I, I can know what's going on. I can know all the ins and outs. That's absolutely fine. The only thing that I, I'm not going to do is I'm not going to participate in discussions about a solar bylaw amendment. I'm not going to participate in discussions about legal strategy with a complaint against our solar bylaw. I'm not going to participate in deliberation on a special permit for brown-mouthed solar. You know, I could, you know, but administrative things are okay, right? That's just strictly administrative. I mean, that could include, you know, even you know, running a hearing, which, you know, I may not do that, but I mean, in theory, I, I could do that because it doesn't involve any discussion. When you have a hearing for a special permit, the whole point of the hearing is that you're receiving testimony and not deliberating. And not discussing it until the hearing is closed. And then you have deliberation.
And Nathan, how about, I mean, just to clarify for the group, so the next item on the agenda after I anticipated is sort of an update on the AG decision. So I guess to Ash's point, you could either stay and listen but, and not run that part of the meeting, or you could decide that you have to leave the meeting. So I think that would be a, a point of clarity.
Right, so the, you know, the part of the meeting that's coming up, you know, update on the Attorney General decision, I can and, and probably will stay for. And then, you know, what I've been doing is, you know, whenever we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the, the calls complaint, I, I have opted to not participate in that session because you know, from an outsider's view, you know, I could go in there and, and not participate in the discussion and just listen, and that would be okay, but because it's an executive session, no one can determine whether or not I'm actually not participating and just listening, or, or whether I might be opening my mouth and contributing to the conversation. So to, to make that, to avoid that potential appearance of you know, participating in discussion on this, on this kind of thing, I don't, I haven't been going into executive sessions about that. So it's, you know, the, the issue would really be you know, if I'm gonna like, you know, I can't be acting in, in, in this space in my capacity as a planning board member. And I can act as an individual. Right, but you know, I can't come onto this, you know, come into an open meeting and participate in discussion about what I think the solar bylaw should be, or what I think the conditions should be for a special permit that we're gonna, you know, approve or deny. But that's it. You know, there's no issue with me being in the loop on it or, you know, being present. You know, there's been a lot of votes where I've, you know, recorded an abstention, and that's okay. Right, so. Now, Miriam, I see you have your hand up. Are you do you have a question on this, or?
Well, I'm, I'm just speaking as a, a member of the public. Thank you for, I was just gonna share and I appreciate this discussion about recusals and, you know, how to manage this, because, you know, I've experienced this myself as a chair of the Conservation Commission in situations where I was recused, or I recused myself. I will just say that my own experience is I've recused myself completely from even facilitating the public hearing if I was recusing myself in any way, just because even matters like who you call on for public comments could be perceived as showing you know, either bias or favor. So out of an abundance of caution, I've just handed that over to another designated person who was acting as chair for the purposes of that public hearing. I just wanted to share that experience. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate that. And so back to the motion we have on the floor. You know, is there anyone else that wants to offer any comment or question on this?
I have a question if, wait a second. I have a question if I could. What, what would happen if your employee asks, starts probing you for questions and information? How does that, how does that play out?
If my employer were to probe me about things, well, you know, if most everything is public information, so I'm free to share anything, you know, unless it's privileged.
Okay, I was just curious how that, how, you know, what kind of power do they have over you to influence what happens as well?
Oh, to influence what happens? Well, I mean, they can't influence, the only way they can influence what I do is, is by determining, you know, whether or not I can participate. And, you know, and for example, if, if I were to slip up and, and do the wrong thing, or I say, you know, this is too important to me. I want to you know, I, 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 I'm choosing service to the town over my livelihood. And then, you know, they decide to terminate my employment, that's maybe a poor decision on my part, but then you know, I would still be here.
Okay. Well, thank you for your, you know, volunteering to be the chair under a situation that is challenging. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah. It's my pleasure. Anyone else? All right, I'm, I'm gonna call a roll then. Raymond?
Aye.
Ibrog?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Bonner? You're on mute. I saw kind of a head nod.
Aye.
Thank you. Deacon? And I'm at night. Uh, thank you everyone for that. All right, so I have unanticipated business here. I don't think we have any. Does anyone?
I, I have one thing to bring up.
All right, let's, let's hear it.
I read in the bulletin that the Kittredge Estate in Leverett may soon have, will put forward a proposal for seven hundred unit development. I think this is something we should pay attention to. That's the, that's the sort of development that can change the character of a town. I mean, it's, that's almost as many people as lived in Leverett now.
Yeah, that, that's true. That's true.
I mean, we should, we should keep up with it. I mean, I, I don't know the Leverett zoning. I don't, I have no idea of the facts of the case, but it's a really momentous proposal.
Yeah, I would, I'll jump in, you know, I was talking to Donna last week about the, the solar stuff, which I'll tell you about later, but you know, this was breaking news, and so we talked about it briefly, and she said exactly those words, Deacon, that, you know, it changed, this is the stuff that changes the character of the town. She was, she did not think it was a good idea. And I, I had the same similar idea, which is, you know, the only way they can pull this off is getting water and sewer from Amherst, which, you know, is not plausible for chute spray, but nonetheless, it raises a really you know, no one would have thought this is possible, seven hundred units in the middle of Leverett. So it is something worth considering and discussing.
I, I would say that, that when we, when we did the, the oh eight zoning, this, this is the sort of this is the sort of proposal we were tremendously concerned about. And, and I mean, our concerns have changed, but this is a reprise of our old concerns.
Yeah. It's hard to imagine, how many, seven hundred units?
Seven hundred units.
That's what the article said.
Yeah, they were off on the acreage, but the seven hundred units is what they, is what Donna said as well.
If they're off on the acreage, they could be off on the
No, I think they got the units right. They said it was three acres, but it can't be three acres. That's too small.
Oh, no, it's hu, it's a huge place. I mean, I, I don't know how many acres, but it's very large.
If something, I have a question. If something like that were to be proposed in Chutesbury, it would have to be through special permit?
It would have to be open space design, I think.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the, I don't, insidious is maybe not the right, the right word, but the thing with Leverett, and we've talked about this in terms of the, the tiny houses, that the requirements for all municipalities to have ten percent affordable housing in town. And if you don't have a town that has ten percent affordable housing in it, then they get to go forward, the developers get to go forward without the usual processes. It's sort of a state. And I don't know all the details, but that's the lever that they're using in Leverett, because Leverett does not have ten percent housing, affordable housing.
And that's the, and that's the same, that's the same lever that, that Cinda has threatened us with in the past. I mean, and, you know, this is a very real possibility.
So in that case, yeah, we, I've been wanting to get to that, but it's is that synonymous with, or, you know, tantamount to like a constructive grant? On, on say a special permit application if the board fails to act?
I, I don't know how this would play out legally. I mean, this is, I mean, my guess is, seven hundred units, there are going to be plenty of issues in play, but the forty B stuff is isn't, is very big.
Right.
Yeah, all, all I'm saying is we should pay attention.
Right, right. So yeah, yeah, we, we should, I agree. And then, you know, before we move on to this next agenda item, I, I I want to just take a peek at the calendar and, and, and see when our next meeting might be. Is it
January eighth is what it, it looked like, because the first is a Monday.
The first is a Monday? And that's, we don't have any holidays or anything like that, right? Not till the next week. Okay, so the eighth, yeah, I got, okay, yeah. So our next meeting will be January eighth. You can mark your calendars. Okay, so with that, the next item on our agenda is the AD AG decision on the solar bylaw discussion. And yes, this will be Michael.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan. So just to set it up.
Thank you, Michael.
And I'll just point out, Nathan's under the weather. He did an amazing job getting us through the full agenda, not, not a hundred percent. So, good job. I think what there's things that overlap between the solar bylaw and then the solar complaint. And so the solar complaint stuff, obviously, we're going to do an executive session, and some of them are intertwined and talking to Donna. So I, I'll tell you the stuff that I think is appropriate in exec, in public session, and then we can move into executive session. So I think this is the first regular planning board, except for the joint one where, you know, we're coming together post the Attorney General turning down our solar bylaw. One thing of note is a few days later, so sometime last week, Pelham solar bylaw also got rejected by the Attorney General. The Pelham bylaw, Jeff consult, Jeff Lacy consulted with Pelham and it's modeled pretty closely on ours. The interesting thing is that, without going into all the details, they got rejected for different things than we got rejected. So that's just sort of an interesting observation. And you know, Jeff, Jeff's looked at that one, and that's what he conveyed. So there's inconsistency in basically having two simultaneous, two identical kind of bylaws rejected. So the net effect, just to sort of state it for everybody, is that we approved the bylaw that got rejected in January two thousand twenty-three. Since that's rejected, the bylaw that's currently in place still is in place. And the reason being is that when we sought to approve the two thousand twenty-three, we were replacing, we would have replaced the current one with a two thousand three version, because that was rejected. The two thousand twenty-one version is in, in place. So you can either do two things. You can amend one, something, or you can replace it. So we chose this January to replace it. So, so what that means is that our two thousand twenty-one remains fully intact. So even though the Attorney General critiqued the map for two thousand twenty-three, the map exists in the two thousand twenty-one, and that's already been approved. And many of the regulations that they identified in their rejection of the two thousand twenty-three are in place for the two thousand twenty-one. So what Donna said is basically, we have a solid solar bylaw. It's not as comprehensive with the updates that we had planned for two thousand twenty-three. It doesn't have that rationale at the very beginning, the background that connects to health, public offer and safety. And there's some, you know, it doesn't have the E S S, Energy Storage System stuff, but the two thousand twenty-one is what we have now, and it's, it's pretty comprehensive. So that's just worth knowing, which is very different from, you know, before when we had nothing. So the fact that they rejected it, we still have things in our lap that are, you know, protective, is what Donna had said. In terms of going forward, there's a couple of things that Donna had talked about. So one is the planning board might want to consider moving forward with the energy storage bylaw that's separate. And we can discuss that, you know, starting in the new year, if we want to do that, what that would look like, but if we were to do that, it would have to take a different approach, because what the Attorney General said in rejecting ours was and then that it's now a protected use under the solar exempt, the chapter forty-eight, section three, paragraph nine. So even though I think we collectively, and I, I know personally, and Donna disagrees with their assessment, the Attorney General now says that energy storage, whether it's a primary or a secondary use is protected. So you're not allowed to prohibit it and regulate it reasonably, if it's based on public health, welfare and safety. So if we were to go forward, that would be the conversation of how do we safely regulate energy storage. So that's sort of that track. And then in terms of solar, specifically what Donna had said clearly, if we were to come back and create a two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, whatever, solar bylaw, we would similarly have to take a different approach in that what we came, got back was that things that we were prohibiting, we probably can't prohibit. And so we would have to approach it some from performance standards. So looking at things that regulations in terms of performance in relation to public health, welfare and safety, as opposed to saying you can do it or you can't do it. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of different approach. I think for now, all that, I think Donna recommended that we talk about is that as a planning board, we can consider going forward and have a conversation of, do we want to try to put something forward or not? That's like the conversation we can start in January. There's, there is time to put, you know, another solar bylaw in place. But we have to decide what that would, if we wanted to do it and what it would look like. But the starting place would be to look at the two thousand twenty-three, see what we liked and what we could preserve. And if there's things we wanted to preserve, how to express it differently. And especially in light of the fact that the AG had a different critique of Pelham versus ours. It, it does beg the question of how do we go forward maneuvering between the two interpretations? How do we go forward maneuvering between the two interpretations that the AG put forth, so that it actually, um. Can pass muster, um. I think. That's probably the extent of what is good to share in open meeting, do people have questions, does that make sense?
Hey. You have a copy of the the letter they sent Pelham, the AG's office sent Pelham?
Jeff does. Uh, I don't know if he's allowed to share it or not, um, but. I did, I did talk to, um, the chair of the planning board for Pelham, um. It sounded like they would probably didn't wanna share it yet, cuz they were, they were doing, we're going to do, I think, that's a good question. Um, they're trying to figure out if they wanna appeal as well, so I think it's it's in that holding pattern. Um, the other thing I would just say in terms of, you sort of just reminded me about this. We can, as a town, appeal the AG's decision, we have until January fifteenth. Um, it's, I think the planning board would be consulted, but it's really the select board who would make the decision to go forward. With the appealing process, um. As of last week, there was no decision made, um, the planning board had, I mean, the select board had a. Executive session with Donna last week, but it was, I don't think it was substantive, I think it was more just sort of. Understanding some of the options about financing and things like that, but, um. So we got a few weeks until we officially can appeal the complaint, and I think Pelham's doing the exact same thing, trying to figure out if they wanna appeal, um. And I'm not clear. Like, what one can appeal and what we can appeal, I mean, there's things that I'd love to, but I don't know how much we're allowed to or not, so, um. And I haven't heard from the select board. If they wanted to have a joint meeting, I'm assuming we would have a joint meeting to discuss that, um. If we wanted to appeal the Attorney General's decision, and I I will say. Steve Bresser had asked this question, um. It was my understanding, and I think generally the planning board's understanding. That when the Attorney General rejected our associate member by law a few years ago, that. Donna came back and said municipalities can't appeal the Attorney General's decision, which is why. We ended up going the legislation route and the home rule route, so. Steve asked if that was the case, why we could appeal this time, and I don't know the answer, and I haven't had time to talk to Donna, um, to ask that question, but. Even though we were under the assumption you couldn't appeal, apparently we can, um, through January fifteenth, so.
Who do we appeal to?
I think we appeal to the Attorney General. I I don't know what the process is, um. That's, and I remember we had a conversation with the associate member part of, it seems sort of silly to appeal to the people who just rejected you. And expect to have a different determination if it's the exact same players, so. I actually don't know more than that, Deacon, but but I'm assuming it goes back to the Attorney General, unless it, you know, this, the people who rejected us were the. Municipal unit, and one of the reasons there's two decisions is there's two people in the municipal unit, and each person wrote. One person wrote the shoot spray decision, one person wrote the Pelham decision, um.
They don't talk to each other.
So I, and appeal, I don't know if it actually goes to the actual Attorney General, I'm not sure what the procedure is, um, it's a great question, though. It's a never-ending learning process with this stuff, you think you know stuff until you don't know stuff. Any other questions? Okay. Should we go into executive session, I can give you the update on the complaint part, does that sound like a good plan? Nathan, you're gonna leave us?
Yes, I am, just wanna say, uh, to everyone, uh, have a good night and, uh. You know, as much as I regret not having a much longer meeting, you know, I opted not to have, uh, our, uh. Some of our ongoing conversations around tiny houses and uh night skies on the agenda, but I do hope to get back to that, uh. Soon. And uh, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thanks, Nathan.
Thanks for the agenda, for organizing it, and for uh, and for showing up when you don't feel so well, thank you, thank you, Nathan.
Same same to you, Jeff.
No, I feel fine now, I just won't in about uh ten hours.
That's his name.
Okay. Well, so I'm gonna make a motion and then we'll roll call out, and then we'll. Uninvite the public, um, so I'll I'll move to go into executive session for reason number three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's litigating position. Litigation specific to complaint received from Coles regarding this Shitsbury solar by law not to return to open meeting. Anyone want a second?
Second, Robert.
Great, thank you, Robert, so, um, I will do a roll call in, um. So Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Ashley?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Um, let's see, we might, we lost Nathan, where's Deacon, there's Deacon.
Aye.
And I'm an eye, so. And. I wanna thank everyone who was listening to us, and sorry you can't join us, but, um. So. Shane and Edward and Leslie and Sue, we will say good night, and Sharon. Um, and of course Keith, you can say, and Tom, where's Tom go? Uh, we lost Tom, Bonner.
Should I start removing people who haven't left?
Yeah. Thank you, Carrie.
Hold on, I'm still.
Yeah. Okay, so I've I've since learned that we're supposed to confirm.